That's going to be the number in blue, if you can see that, but that is seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
That's all capital, all departments.
That is correct.
Oh, for us. Record.
So, um, if we're ready to move on, we can start talking about salary benefits and have those discussions?
Yeah.
All right. I discussed that we had, I put in a placeholder of three percent. For the past three years, we have been mimicking what the bargaining unit has been doing, and they have a three percent increase as well. So I have put in for the, for the non-bargaining individuals, I have placed a three percent increase in there, and that has been what's been presented thus far. The compensation board is something that I also want to bring up as well, so we can kind of get that ironed out and start, I guess, start moving forward with this budget. So let me share my screen here.
But for now, you did put those increases in.
That is correct, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All the compensation board increases are three percent. Gotcha.
Correct, yeah. So, so on the board right now, you will see, let me, let me try to scoot that over as much as possible. Of course.
But I guess this is a good item we can vote on today, instead of waiting until Thursday or at a later date.
Correct.
We can at least get clarity on this issue. Am I correct?
Maybe, Ken, and a couple of them, yeah.
I'll agree.
Yeah?
It's true. It's being a little bit finicky here for me, so I apologize. But right now, you're looking at, the compensation board came forward with a recommendation for ten percent for the attorneys, for the attorney, the twenty percent increase for the sheriff, and all other elected officials at four and a half percent. You'll see, you'll see the increases reflected in orange from the previous year and blue. And then the, the box is just the non-bargaining. So at two and a half percent, there's an increase of eighty thousand six eighty-one, and that is countywide. So that is everybody that's non-bargaining. For two points, at two point seven five, you're at eighty-eight thousand seven forty-nine, and at three percent, you're at ninety-six thousand eight eighteen. So, going from there.
And could Mike or James explain how we are allowed to proceed by code with these compensation recommendations?
I'll go ahead on this one. You basically have the following options. Number one, you can accept them as they are put forth. Number two, you can reduce them each by a proportional percentage. Number three, you can reduce things by a proportional percentage, but can reduce the board of supervisors by more than that. Those are the only options. I've actually researched this a lot this year, and there is no option to reject the whole thing and send it back to the compensation board.
And it's an unusual year for us, too, the way this was done, obviously, but...
It is.
But, and I have talked to some other counties, because I said when we had this large percentage that was, well, some proposed even larger than the twenty percent, but for the sheriff, the twenty percent and the ten, and some of the other counties said they did it incrementally, but it turned out, it really made no difference. They should have probably did it right up front and just went, went with that, so.
Yeah, and the new statute, the new statute required the compensation board to try to make sheriff's salary comparable to certain other salaries. There's actually a pretty wide divergence of salaries that fall into that mix. But, long story short, that, that requirement is on the compensation board, but it is not on this board.
And there's, there's other code that come into play as well, newly enacted Back the Blue becomes involved in regard to the sheriff's salary and such, so there are many.
That's exactly what I'm getting at, actually, is what came through Back the Blue.
Yeah.
Well, Amanda, it was so good to provide the information, I think, too, of where we were in the market then and what that did to us by making those increases, so. That was helpful. Thank you.
We, we get that every year, though, you know, appreciate it.
Well, this year, I know that what she did was the sheriff's market data, or looked at all of the law enforcement positions in the counties and cities and different things, so. Provided us where we would be. I think the ratio of us was then at ninety-three percent.
I'll make a motion that we decrease all by twenty-five percent, so the sheriff would become fifteen percent, county attorney seven point five, and all others would basically be slightly above three percent, if I'm not mistaken.
So you didn't support the twenty percent increase, is there?
Well, you know, I'm trying to look at all the moving parts here. I agree that these individuals need an increase. The sheriff has been, you know, compared to the others, however, we are Black Hawk County. You know, I want to honor the legislation to the best of our ability, Back the Blue to the best of our ability. The police chief in Waterloo got a significant increase over the previous police chief.
Who was that?
So, I don't know, you know, as I consider all these factors, I just, you know, initially, I supported the recommendation from the compensation board, but also inflation comes into play, the economy. I mean, the county is in phenomenal financial shape right now, and I, you know, I've given so much credit to previous boards because of that, but I do just, they do take a lot of the credit. I'm also considering twenty years down the road. What's the sport going to have to deal with twenty years down the road? When I, when I factor in all those dynamics, I make that motion.
To reduce them all twenty-five percent? I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead. I was just saying, it was just clarifying that he meant to reduce all twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Yeah, I read that legislation, and it, it's, it's really terrible. There isn't a person up there, I believe, who does it back the blue. I've been a strong proponent of law enforcement, especially our deputies and so forth. But I also don't, the language is so vague that every county, every attorney really don't understand what the heck they meant. I don't appreciate, I was elected to be the supervisor of Black Hawk County. I don't appreciate them pass legislation and say, "We got to give these huge increases." Look in Black Hawk County, look at the people that are out there. Do you think they get twenty percent increases, or ten percent increases, or forty percent increases? I don't think so. So, to be honest with you, I don't blame the compensation board. They were put in a tough spot again, as they usually are every year, but that language, it, it's terrible language, and what it was, was political, is all it was. And they need to leave the governing to the local officials, not to them up there, because we know our county better than they do up there. So, to be honest with you, I'm not, I don't even know if I'm supporting Dan's, but I'm certainly not supporting the current one. Because I know the people out there, when they see a twenty percent increase, and they're sitting there with nothing, I don't think so.
Chris?
Yeah, I just echo, you know, the frustration that the legislature put us in, and it's, you know, they're always, they're just always dumping on, on local government and talking about transparency and Back the Blue, and, and here we are, you know, the most, you know, local government's the most accessible level of government. When you compare, we're the most open level of government. It's, it's just ridiculous that they give us these unfunded mandates, and as Tom said, it's pure politics. I, I could be supportive of what, what Dan has, has put forward today, though.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd, I'd fall under the same guidelines. Wouldn't we like to give everyone, I guess, sizable increases? Because I said we've had great staff, and we've worked through COVID and different things, and, and I guess I think that would be probably a fair step to, to address that in that way. Because, again, I guess my problem is that it was forced upon us, and it becomes almost like an unfunded mandate then, telling us that this is what you need to do, and this is how you do it. But this hopefully addresses what they want to done and, and still makes it better for our county, I think.
I wish the legislature would have let the local officials make up their mind rather than them doing it there.
Yeah.
You know, it's a shame when, like Chris said, or what's been said about the, the local, how much over the years that we've saved the taxpayers money, and then stuff like this comes up, that they try to shove it down our throat. I'm, I'm like Tom. I, I don't think there's a lot of people out there that would be very happy seeing these type of raises being given.
I'm being forced to do it.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I'm being kind of forced to do it. It was like just told this is the way you're going to do it, or the way you should do it, and it's unfortunate. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, and then Dan made the statement that even though we're sitting in somewhat good, sound financial position, can we afford it? Yes. But he said twenty year, twenty years down the road, well, it ain't going to be ten, twenty years. It's going to be five or seven years. You're going to see a different budget up there, and I've had this discussion with James already. And plus the fact remains that, you know, there's no ceiling if they leave that legislation. So next year, then the salary's higher, you put another twenty percent or forty percent on. I mean, there's no cap, it just keeps going. So where does it end? It's a bad piece of legislation.
So, it sounds like we're ready to vote on it.
Was there a second?
Did you make the motion to do it then?
I made a motion, yes.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
No.
Chelka?
Yes.
I did chuck your head in the last.
Sorry.
So what did you want, more?
Less.
I meant, I meant you wanted to reduce more.
Yeah. Wait till you hear from the taxpayers.
Well, I know, that's what I meant, though, it was still reduced, yeah. Okay.
It took a lot, a lot of years to get that, our fund balance up, like where we got it now, and, you know, if we could give big raises to everybody. I know there's people out there that deserve them.
Yeah.
But we've got to be responsible to the, to the taxpayers, too, you know.
Well, I think this was.
They're the ones that pay the bill.
Maybe, you don't think enough, but I do think this was.
I mean, nobody understands this, you know. I've talked to Isaac, I've talked to the lawyer up there at Isaac. They don't understand it. It's so vague that nobody really understands it, or how do you enforce it, or anything.
Yeah, I agree. I think when we started looking at comps, it was like, okay, who selects which comps you're looking at, at which areas, and how is that based? So, yeah, it was confusing.
It was politics, so.
Yeah.
We've never.
I think the only thing that's clear that despite what's in the constitution, I would say that this is no longer a home rule stage.
Yes, that's for sure.
Good point, Chris.
But Back the Blue, I think, there wasn't anybody up here that didn't, I said that was never, we all supported that.
Question there, they just tagged that on there.
Yeah. Sad.
Moving on.
Did we want to talk about non-bargaining?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. We usually do it at the same time.
We usually do that at the same time. Like I said, I have, I plugged in three percent for across the boards, and, and bargaining is currently at three percent as well. You can see what, what that would look like if we decided to adjust that.
I'll make a motion to approve three percent.
Second.
And will you, on Thursday, bring back the numbers, I guess, what that does to our compensation packages and things? Okay, thank you. All right.
Yeah, yep, yeah.
So. And vote? You, you did the second.
Yeah, I did the second.
Okay, so you've got the first and second?
No further discussion, I guess.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Moving on.
I'll get those updated, and then address, I might do a quick summary on that when we start talking about the current levy implications for around Thursday.
Yeah.
So, just, just so everybody's all on the same page.
Yeah.
Uh, finally, public purpose in dollar amounts, so. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm a little confused because you had department heads up there, three percent, so I wasn't sure.
Sorry, that's.
But, I just, really quick, last year, we had discussed, or I'd brought up about how we have half of our department heads on the GS scale and about the other half that aren't, so there's, it's not consistent with how people are awarded the merit increase. So, and usually, I think you guys would then vote on department heads increases as well, but if we're going to lump everybody into non-bargaining, I have done that evaluation, and, you know, that would include our VA director, conservation, public health director, and Kathy, the county engineer, to then be put on the GS scale as non-bargaining, so everybody's the same. I just wanted to highlight that quick and ask if that's agreeable to you all, so that.
Do you want, do you want a motion on the department, on the directors to, traditionally in the past, when we approved the non-bargaining, it was considered of various department heads or directors. If you want, we make the same motion right now.
Yeah, well, I guess I just want to have, you know, approval that these four individuals are put on the GS scale, like how Rory is, James is, myself, and Al. We're all on the GS scale. We're directors and department heads, but we have four that are not, and I'd just like some, I guess, yes, approval that we're going to treat them all as non-bargaining going forward.
Is there any downside for them by, by doing this?
No, it's an upside in fact, that they're compensated equally to James, myself, Rory, and now Al. So it would be a slight merit increase, depending on where they fall. The most we're seeing is two percent. That would be for like our VA director and, and, or conservation.
Who's currently not on there, Amanda, under a department head status?
Um, county engineer currently is not, VA director is not, public health director is not, and neither is conservation.
Have you checked with them to see if they choose that? Because right now, they take vacation time at their leisure, is that correct?
So this would only be applying to how they're compensated. It wouldn't, this wouldn't apply to any accruals. I just wanted to align the compensation so that everybody is aligned consistently, and, or I guess, you know, treated consistently. But no, we didn't, we haven't talked about the actual accruals. That's a benefit package. This is purely the compensation, what their annual salary is.
I think the board, or I need any waste more information on that.
Okay.
My feeling right, right now is I'll make a motion to approve the three percent for the, my guess, if you want to call them department heads, directors, or whatever. And then we need some more discussion on what you want to do.
Sure, so, and I can, I want them to be treated the same as James, myself, Rory, and Al.
Okay.
Well, the board over the years, the board over the years started that transition when we created Rory's position. Actually, it was Kathy and Kim, I recall, were the last two.
Right.
And we started, we started to go that other way. It's just that those positions hasn't changed. How do you add?
Well, they have changed, because they've changed. Al is like myself, so he has accruals, but he is on the non-bargaining scale. Now, Nafisa's changed, Yolanda's been appointed recently, Mike has been appointed recently, so these are all recent appointments. I think, I, I don't know that the, because they have their kind of autonomous boards, that they maybe understood them not being on the non-bargaining scale, that they would be missing a merit increase. But that's what I'd like to correct going forward, because they all have actually changed over in the past five years. And we, and for whatever reason, we didn't transition it, so I would like them to be transitioned at this time, too.
It's really a correction.
It's, it is. It's simply in, in that way, whether you're a department head or a director, you're on the non-bargaining scale, and you, your compensation is handled similarly as, as than everybody else, so.
Second, Mr. Little's vote.
Oh, yeah, I thought you would do that, didn't you?
So, yeah, I guess, Tom, if that is helpful, is that a three percent with them being added to the non-bargaining scale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It used to be, and I don't know, Grant can correct me, but it used to be years ago on our agenda, the final budget hearing that we adopted, we would accept the compensation, we would accept the non-bargaining. These are all separate items, and we also had an item for department heads. And under that department heads, we considered the VA, the conservation, and also the health department. Over the years, I think those agenda items kind of disappeared, and we lumped them all together, and yet I could be wrong on that.
Grant?
I agree that it was done like that in the past, but it wasn't entirely consistently. And, you know, the law requires that you have the compensation board recommendation put on the agenda for the, for the final budget hearing, but it doesn't require that you vote on it then. And so, over the years, there's, there's been quite a variety on how the board makes the decision whether they do it all at one time before the, the budget hearing, or during the budget hearing, or whether they do it piecemeal. It's, it's really, you know, when we're in the middle of budget negotiations or hearings, sometimes a supervisor will, just like today, make a motion, and then if it's seconded, it's voted on, rather than waiting for a more formal process.
That doesn't really address the correction part of it. That just is when it's on the agenda and how we voted on it, correct, Grant?
So again, it's just something for you guys to consider. It's, you do have, you know, Kathy has not gotten a merit increase, our county engineer, because of a technicality is how I kind of look at it. I just, when there's these things, I'd like to just bring it forward for you guys to consider.
That those four have.
That those four, right.
Those four people have, sure.
And Kathy being the only one that actually reports to the board. So I think it would, you know, be in the best interest that we have it aligned to the scale that we have and the policies that we have. That's just my, I guess, recommendation and something I wanted to bring to your awareness.
You said Kathy's the only one who reports to the board?
Under, yes, so of the four that are not on the scale, the county engineer is the one that doesn't have an autonomous board that they report to. The other three do, and, and they typically, what they do is adopt our policies and handbook, and to basically mirror whatever it is our board has done. And, and again, this would just help that the compensation increases be consistent when it comes to across the board, which has always been done consistently. But then when we change that merit policy, that's where we start to see discrepancies between.
That was like two or three years ago, wasn't it?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's, that's the only.
Something we should have done then, probably, yeah.
Probably back then, when we did it, we should have acknowledged it then, and, yeah, but it is relatively minor.
Amanda, the, in regards to Kathy, I was on that interview committee. I believe what she's current receiving was negotiated items for employment. I mean, her status was all negotiated, if I'm not mistaken.
I think.
So is she requesting that it be changed now, or is it you?
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to align it to be consistent, so that the negotiation occurs because it's driven by the non-bargaining scale. No, Kathy has not requested this. This is just a recommendation in seeing that you've got people being compensated slightly differently, but reporting to the same board.
Yeah.
And having the same, similar level of responsibility as head of a department, so.
Yeah. So does your motion to do it, Tom, still stand?
Well, I think we, the, the motion has always been, in the past, is we get three percent for non-bargaining, we get three percent to the directors' departments, whatever you want to call it. So, we used to have separate items, items on the budget that way. We don't any more for you, so I have a motion to do the three percent, just like we did for the non-bargaining, for the department heads and directors.
But that doesn't address what you're talking about, correct, or not? So we're talking about two different things, aren't we?
Well, so, yeah, I guess it kind of, what's the definition, so the definition of department head, and I appreciate Tom's, you know, three percent.
Yes.
Like them to be on the scale, and I don't know if you need to take action to officially put them on the scale so that they are subject to the same policies as other department heads, but that's my goal.
Yeah, and I would think we would, just to be clear. I think for the clarification of everybody knowing when we did it, and that it was done, and acknowledging that it hasn't been done up till this point, probably would take.
What'd they get last year, department heads?
Three percent. And you can still, you can still break it out to the, across the board, you can vote on it, and, and then, but then, if you vote on department head, I kind of would expect then James would be included in that, myself would be included in that, and then we're still, if we have a merit increase under the policy, that be awarded the way the policy reads, and everybody fall under that policy. That's what.
Is James, is James non-bargaining or department head?
I would consider him a both, like myself. He reports to the board.
So did James, so did James get a three percent last year, just like non-bargaining?
Yes, and he got a merit increase of three percent because of where he fell on the scale, like I did. I got a three percent merit increase, less than a three percent across the board. And that's the merit piece, is what I'm trying to address.
Yeah.
Is to allow for that any department head be compensated the same structure across all of the departments, I guess, because.
And it's those four positions.
Right, Kathy did not get a merit, Nafisa did not get a merit, Yolanda didn't get a merit, and neither did Mike. And I'd like them to be consistent and looped into that. You can still vote each year on the across the board, if you want to tweak that separately for department heads, which would include those key positions.
Let's do it.
So you want me to withdraw my motion on the three percent, give them the merit, and let it ride where it rides?
Well, I.
That would work.
I guess, yeah, if you give, if you allow them to get the merit, then they would fall under the non-bargaining three percent that you guys just approved, and then they would just follow the policy.
So that would be doable.
Like I said, I was just trying to clear up the department heads. I, I don't know, I got a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
Well, we could do one after, I guess. I mean, it's still, it would add them to it, right? Whether we, however, the order we do it, we can still do the order and and make the three percent across the board, and then make the correction for the adding of those four positions.
Putting them on the scale.
Yeah.
So, what they're going to get then, Amanda, the one or two or whatever you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
If we, if we approve the three percent, they're going to get another increase?
Yes, just like how James does and how I do, and how Al will.
Yeah, just like the others, Tom.
Can we forego the three percent, just put them on that scale, and then they'd be caught up next year?
No, so I would recommend you do a three percent across the board, and you add them to the scale, and then they'll be fine.
Then they get what everybody else is getting.
Yeah, so right, so right now, it, it doesn't necessarily matter. I mean, between myself, Amanda, and Al, I mean, we, we all get that quote across the board, but what, we're also, we're also on the GS scale along with every other non-bargaining employee that does qualify for merit, and so that's, that's kind of where there's, there's a little bit of, of a discrepancy, is there are some, you know, other department heads that are not on the GS scale that do not qualify for the merit, even though they are getting them across the board. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's us and every other non-bargaining employee in, in the county. And the GS scale.
From what I understand, the autonomous boards have the authority, what I was told over the years, to get whatever increase they want to give their director.
Except for.
And it's happened, and it's happened.
Well, and, and I'm happy to go to, I mean, or not happy, I can certainly go to those autonomous boards, and when they adopt our, because they do adopt our policies, and that would be different, they would start to put them on the scale. And again, we're talking a one percent, two percent merit increase. It's, so, yeah, Tom, if that's how you prefer, or if the board wishes to do that, I will go, you know, work with those board members. But I wanted the opportunity to talk to you guys about it, since you also authorize all of those budgets.
And this GS.
GS.
Scale is a policy that was previously approved by the board.
Right, for non-bargaining staff, which, you know, whether you're a department head, if you're not in the union, you're, you are non-bargaining, and we don't really have a system for department head increases, other than just the across the board. But like I said, now we've got some department heads that get merit, some that do not, and I'd like to get that corrected.
Yeah.
Come all the same, so they're all treated the same.
I say we take a vote on the, motion on the floor, and then we consider a second motion.
Yep.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Any further, there's no further discussion. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Veder.
Schwartz?
Schwartz?
Yes.
Sorry, did you say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Chelka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted.
Okay.
Now, what do you want?
He wants a motion. Go ahead. You want to make it?
Well, I would say, I will make a motion that the department heads that currently do not fall under the umbrella of the board policy be brought under the umbrella of the board policy, policy in regard to merit.
And that was veteran affairs, conservation, health and engineers.
Right.
Second, second.
So, those four positions.
And this will certainly help when these positions become vacant again. We'll actually have a GS arrange, just like what, so that, you know, then that negotiate can, negotiation can take place. Those merit increases are driven by policy. If you fall in the first quartile, second quartile, third quartile or fourth, they'll apply to, just like any other non-bargaining employee, they'll be subject to that same policy.
Is there a deficiency in that policy that created this problem?
No, I, I think like Tom said, at one time, we had department heads that whether they were on like a contract or they, you know, they didn't have vacation. And then over time, we evolved to a more, to bringing them into the scale so that we actually had a range, so that when we go to recruit and, and award, you know, increases that there was some kind of system. And so, I think there was just, with the autonomous boards, they drive those hiring processes and I think they probably just did what was done in the past. And I don't, you know, now HR is so much more heavily involved to where we're saying, no, we want a range. This is where they fall in the GS scale and they're going to be compensated accordingly. So, and.
And we just did the merits, like I said, recently. That's been in the last two or three years. We should have corrected it then.
Right, so that was a policy that came before the board a few years ago that set up those quartiles for how people were progressing through their scales. Because for a long time, non-bargaining didn't move in your scale. You just, you got your cross.
So, if, let me get, I, I'm really confused and I apologize for this. So, really, this will affect, other than the autonomous boards, which I think you could get some buck back from them, this only affects Kathy, is that correct?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Well, hold on, I guess.
Grant?
The board sets the VA director's salary as well.
Okay.
We set.
So, this, this affects Kathy. And so, in other words, what's changing is she's going to be on the GIS scale, correct?
The GS scale, yes. And then I'll go.
But, but her, her package as far as she doesn't accrue vacation or anything like that?
Right, that's for a different day. If that's something you guys want to discuss, she, you're right, though, that she doesn't accrue vacation. And if that's something you guys would like me to explore for next year, I'd be happy to. But I focus only on the compensation.
Yeah.
This year, so.
I, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is at the time in negotiations with Kathy, she might be able to relate to this. That was kind of like a carrot, that you're hired, but you have basically unlimited vacation. But you're not on that GS scale. So, now you're going to be on the GS scale, but you still have that benefit of taking two, three weeks at a time because you, you're not accruing it and you can take what you want. And that was part of negotiations. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think, you know, since then, she's gotten an equity adjustment, though. We've obviously changed. I'm not sure when Kathy was hired, but that was, you know, things have evolved. I definitely understand where you're coming from, but I don't even know that any department head was on the GS scale at the time that she was hired. Because our previous IT director was also not on the scale. We've had a couple others over the years that have, it's, it's when those vacancies have come up that we've made that. And I think the intention was, we thought vacancies would occur more quickly so that we could transition everybody to the scale, but that hasn't happened with every role. And now I have, that we've got somebody who isn't getting the merit increase, who reports to the same board. And I, I just want that to be consistent when it comes to.
I think in that case, like Kathy's, her whole package should be shifted over just like the non-bargaining.
And we could definitely look at that.
Her department head, where she accrues vacation and so forth, just like you do.
Yep, and we could definitely do that, too, and say, okay, based on this, she, I mean, I believe she'd be at the highest level of vacation accruing up to five weeks. So, we could look at doing that, too, if you wish.
I think we should, because I think we need to have continuity between these positions. And we've been trying to bring it back when we negotiate the contract or the agreements with the new employees. But I think the next step sometime in the future, we just pull the trigger and.
And that might be something like we've talked about with department head positions. You know, we offer two weeks vacation, I believe, right off the bat, but.
Initially.
But then we've had negotiations with recent hires that have asked for more and the board has on that. So, maybe a department head benefit package might be something I could explore with you guys, because we don't really have that flexibility. It's just on a case by case when it comes to the, yeah, that level of negotiation. But the compensation, I do feel that should be pretty standard across the positions.
Basically, the board did back then what they thought was right. We're doing what we thought are right. Few years, you may be all changed again. Prior to it, Kathy was an engineer that didn't want a full-time job. And the only reason he got hired was that he had the opportunity to take vacation when he wanted to. And that's kind of where that position evolved to when we hired the next engineer. So, there's a reason why we did everything at different time.
Yep, and I, yep, and I think that's, you know, I, I think the trend right now is in that it could change, but most everybody expects that it's not like a unlimited PTO. It's a, there's a standard and.
Is this going to cost, is this going to cost the county more money doing it this way than you're suggesting right now?
So, the way that they fall on the scale, there'd be a one, at the most, a 2% increase and a, a merit increase of their salary.
Above and beyond, above and beyond the 3%.
Correct, just as the policy states. So, so, yes, it will cost some money for the consistency.
Inequity.
Inequity, yes, thank you. But it's pretty.
Do we have a second on the floor on that?
I believe we do have a second.
Yeah, we do.
I'm sorry.
I did.
All right. I know. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I, I.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor for this and hearing, any, any further discussion? Hearing nine, roll call vote. Mr. Veder?
Chelka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Oh.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Anything else to come before us?
Yeah.
James?
Public purpose.
Oh, that's right.
They're all still online. We're hoping.
And board, I got messages to you from both Barb, Rachel and Barb Grant. They both had meetings and, and fundraising events that they had to get to and they would like to be able to speak to us on Thursday.
Let's just delay due to the time to Thursday, pick it up from there.
Does that work for you as far as?
That's, that, that will be fine. We'll just, we'll have to make an assumption anyway when we start talking about the levy. Because with that, with those dollars being in there and budgeted, if I, if I carry that over from FY '22 to FY '23, we'll just, we'll kind of have to finagle that levy a little bit, but it.
Right.
I, I don't, I don't anticipate.
You're putting everything in right now, the levy you're going to bring to us on, I mean, everything you had to date for the most part is going to be in there and that all the compensation changes, too. And we've always given, like say, for many years, I guess there's been something in this public purpose account, anyway, for just purposes of throwing something in, could we throw in a figure of $100,000?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that was the.
It does make sense.
Because we can always take it out or remove it or whatever, but that gives you something to come back with the levy.
Right, absolutely. And so, that would, that would be the assumption that we'd make is, is the $100,000 and then we adjust from there, so.
If it does, if the rest of the board sees that it is okay, throw in $100,000.
Well, it's going to be a long process because first you got to go with R, first you got to determine the need for the service, then you got to go through an RFP, and then you got to go through the bids. So, it's going to be a process and ain't going to be done overnight.
Oh, no, we know that. I think it's just to have a number in there, Tom, so that when we go ahead and, like I say, look at the levy and look at some of those things, that there's a number in there, we don't wait till the end of the process and then go now we didn't budget for it.
Yeah, I agree with you, just as long as it's understood that just because that number's in there, don't mean we got to spend that number.
No, it's just a number in there for now till July, to see what July 1 would look like, yeah.
Chairman White, White is right, the placeholder.
Yeah.
James?
So, I guess I just want, yeah, I just want a little bit of clarity on that. So, so, if I put in $100,000, then we can have our levy, levy conversations, would you like us to have a public purpose conversation on Thursday to then adjust that $100,000? Or would you like me to just carry that forward and set the levy and then we can have public purpose conversations after we set the budget?
I, I'd prefer we go ahead and put the $100,000 in there, but I still think they wanted the opportunity today to speak to their funds or lack of or whatever. I'm not sure. I was going to say, I know, we talked about them, talking today about it, but.
And I would like to see the, the $100,000 in there and then we can, you know, even then that allows us to, even after the budget process is done, we've got a set amount of money designated for this, from which we can fairly and openly accept proposals.
Yeah, and I don't think they were coming with any dollar amounts, James. I think they were coming to, today to really talk about accountability and what it means and what kind of services they provide and that type of thing, kind of helping us know going forward. So, it wouldn't change that dollar amount necessarily.
No, not necessarily their conversations, but, but this board's conversations on public purpose would change that dollar amount. And so, it, again, if, if you want me to change, or if you want me to earmark $100,000, that's fine. The, you know, the, the other thing that, you know, that, that we can at least mull over is just pulling it out of the budget altogether and using fund balance. So, moving, moving forward, we're not levying for that actual dollar amount, we're using, we're using fund balance.
That would probably make more sense.
I'd still like to see it thrown in. I'd still like to see it thrown in and see what our budget looks like and where we're at with the levy, though, before we start pulling things out.
I do like the fund balance idea.
Well, we've got plenty in fund balance to utilize, that's for sure.
That makes sense.
But there's other things we may want to pull out for fund balance.
Yep.
I mean, there's several things in there.
Yeah, and, and that's just, you know, like I said, that's, that's just been something that I kind of have, have been thinking about is if we add, if we, you know, keep adding money to, to our reserves, then, you know, maybe that'd be a good, good way to help combat that, you know, increase. And, and we can assess how much dollar, or how many dollars we, we increased from the previous fiscal year and, and use that as an assessment for, for nonprofits or, or profits moving forward or whatever we decide to do. So, that was just an idea that I had that I want to bring forth to you guys, so.
Yeah, well, could we put it in and then still, like I say, start looking at, might be several items we want to take out, some of those capital expenses as well, if, depending on how we look at the levy, but we could certainly pull the $100,000 out.
Absolutely. I can, I will.
Or unless you want that with both.
What's the preference of the board on this?
Maybe present it two different ways. I mean, present it in and out. I don't know if it's going to make enough difference, $100,000.
Yeah, it, it, it won't make a, a ton of difference, but it will make, it'll make a, it'll make a difference. And so, I can, I can present it both ways. I can keep it in there and, and we can discuss the levy. Regardless, no matter what we do with, with, with the changes to the legislation and removing that mental health, we are going to be decreasing this pretty significantly. And so.
I say leave it in there, but somebody from the board, bring it up on Thursday to remind us that we have $100,000 plugged in there. I, I, I really like unbalanced usage.
Well, we might, yeah, there might be some other things we want to take with fund balance, depending on where we want to be with the budget or the levy, but, yeah.
Agreed. Anything else?
Super, thanks. You might be prepared to review some of this stuff with us.
Come with coffee.
I guess we want a motion. It looks like some of us.
Well, I do, on number nine, are we done with the budget?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that's all I.
Any reports or information from the board?
You know, I just want to break the ice on a couple issues here, because there's many moving parts in place. But this deals with the budget, this deals with taxes, this deals with levies. But sometime in the future, I would like to have the board look at an EMA levy. Right now, there's a survey going on with Consolidated Dispatch and how it's funded. And I'm anxious to hear what they have to say in regard to the study or survey, whatever you want to call it, how it should be funded. I've always been a proponent of EMA levies. I see Bramer County is taking up one, so I'd like our board to discuss it in the future. Also, I'm always looking for opportunities.